And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And Kathy, would you use some prayer please?
Of course, thank you. Dear heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for all the blessings you've bestowed on each and every one of us. We ask for your wisdom, your guidance in making decisions today that will affect many. We ask all of this in my heavenly precious name. Amen.
Before we start this morning, I know that our health commissioner is with us this morning, and I really appreciate him at short notice last night, maybe nine o'clock, something like that. I'd sent out a notice requesting, and then also our deputy director of EMA is also here with us. So Michael Martin's with us, as well as Larry Mullins. And what I would like to do this morning, if it'd be all right with you two, is they are very busy.
Yes.
And last week, we kind of, I think we may have abused them a little bit. They were here for quite some time, but we would like to open up the floor. We'll do a couple of items here real quick, and then we'll stop, and that will give people a chance to ask questions online, and then we'll let you all answer those. We're going to try to keep those brief this morning. There is a lot going on, so we will get them out of here as soon as possible, if that's all right with you gentlemen. I know that you would appreciate that. We talked a little bit about it last evening, so, or this morning, or maybe it was yesterday evening. Everything's a blur anymore. So anyways, we'll do a couple of items if it's okay, and then we'll stop, and then we'll let the public ask any questions they may have. There's been some changes in the last week, definitely, so we'll go from there. So if we could get a motion to approve the minutes.
One moment, and then we'll recommend that they save their questions about business after this briefing.
That would be great, yeah. Any questions about business, hold on to those. Questions about COVID, Health Department, EMA response, things like that, those would be now, and then we'll move on to business after the meeting, so we can get these gentlemen freed up. So do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
No, moved.
People of seven.
I'll second.
Mr. Craftry?
Aye.
Ms. Coleman?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
In the matter of request for preparation of funds.
Are there any questions or comments in regards to the appropriation of transfer of funds? Hearing none?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Ms. Coleman?
Aye.
Mr. Craftry?
Aye.
Mr. Davis? Aye.
In the matter of approving payment of regular scheduled accounts for the various funds, moral obligations, and the minimally certificates in the total amount, $210,200 in the seventh sentence.
Any questions or comments in regards to item three? Hearing none?
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Mr. Craftry?
Aye.
Ms. Coleman?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye. And we'll go ahead and do item four. Go ahead.
In the matter of resolution adopting the side of how employee policy regarding COVID-19.
Any questions or comments in regards to the employee policy in regards to COVID-19? Hearing none?
I'll make a motion to adopt.
Second.
Ms. Coleman?
Aye.
Mr. Craftry?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye. All right, Brian, do we have any questions for the Health Department or EMA?
Yes, I have a couple from motion.
Okay, gentlemen?
Bill's first question, regarding the COVID crisis, what is your biggest concern or concerns right now?
Well, Health Commissioner, my biggest concern is it gets into a nursing home. You know, that's going to, that's where you see a lot of deaths, a lot of mortality across the nation, and I know all the nursing homes have taken lots of steps to keep that from happening, but that's my, my biggest concern right now. I'd like, like, to also go ahead and kind of make a statement about what's going on. I know that SOMC has reported 454 tests since the beginning, with 445 resulted. 437 were negative, and eight were positive. Now, we only have four in Sautauke County, because those patients weren't necessarily from Sautauke County, so their testing is about 1.8% is positive. KDMC has tested over 1,000 people. They have a 3.4%, I think, positive up there. There's been some questions as why we can't report people who've got a test in Sautauke County, because people in Sautauke County get tested throughout the area. We just recently got a report from Licking County that was negative. I think the, a positive case was reported out of Mount Carmel in Columbus, Ohio. That information got to the press before I got it, so there's a lot of, a lot of organizations reporting this. We get reports from Cavill and St. Mary's, so there's no way of just having one, having one person know where everyone's getting tested. I've also had some concerns about the process, about what happens to these people once they have been tested positive. What happens is the epidemiologist, who is for, who covers Sautauke County as well as Lawrence County, gets that information. She's the one to first contact the patient, and she's the one that makes the recommendations about other contacts, whether they need to be tested, whether they need to be quarantined. And then that information is turned over to the respective Health Department. Sautauke County's gotten four. Our nurses then follow up with those patients. They check on them daily to make sure they're doing okay, to make sure that they have what they need to stay in their house and to stay isolated. They go over isolation requirements, about staying in a certain part of their house if they have other people in the house. We also make recommendations about quarantining under, other individuals who are in the house. Again, they check on them daily to make sure they have all their needs, medication, and make sure someone's getting them food and all those things. So they are taken care of in that, in that, in that way. That's about it.
Okay.
Larry Mullins, Sautauke County Deputy Director of EMA. I would echo what the doctor just said. The biggest concerns are our long-term care facilities, and fortunately, we haven't had any reports of outbreak in those, but as we know from watching the national news, those are high-risk places, and our biggest concern with EMA is that we do not have the personal protection equipment to give to the nursing homes if something should break out, so that's a big concern.
Bill said a question. Do you see an end to this crisis, and what does that look like?
We're pretty far away from an end. The first thing that's going to have to happen is we're going to have adequate testing, quick testing, quick turnaround like we have for the flu, like rapid flu tests. The hospital's working on that. I know right now, their testing time is between two to five days with these different labs and different hospitals that they are using, so that's good. The first patient got tested, we got the results back 13 days later, so you can imagine you're quarantined for that period of time, then to find out you're positive, and then to go through all that contact tracing and all that, that's a big headache. So the first thing that we need to have is quick testing, and then we need to have treatment, so that we can, you know, just imagine that you had the flu, and you came in and you got tested. Yeah, you have the flu, go home, here's medication, call us if you're worse. That'd be wonderful. And of course, the third thing that we're going to need is a vaccine, and that's, the experts say that's 12, 18 months away. So this is going to be with us for a long period of time. I think we're going to have to continue to, you know, do the things that we're doing now, which is social distancing, physical distancing, washing our hands, and staying home when you're sick.
All right.
Once again, I just echo the sentiments of Dr. Martin. When this will be over, it's going to take a long time for the effects of this to be over. The disease itself, we're fortunate in Ohio, seems to be leveling out. Estimates give it the 19th as the possible surge, so we're hopeful that things will continue to level off, and, you know, once that's done, like Doc said there, if we get testing so we can test people quickly, and also even the new checking for the antibody blood test, that would be very helpful, because then a lot of folks might be able to get back to work. So the quicker we get back to work and quicker we get, start recovering from this, the better.
All right.
Bill just asked another question. Are you satisfied with the current levels of testing?
Yeah, well, we're not satisfied yet. It'll be nice, and the hospital's looking into it, that is, the hospital I'm referring to, SOMC, is looking, they have the machine, they don't have the reagents yet to rapidly test people, so they keep saying this month, by the end of this month, they could have a machine, they could turn it around in 45 minutes, which would just be, you know, fantastic, because then we could just isolate people, and then, again, if we got some treatment for them, so it's an ongoing process.
My understanding is the machine that the president had on his desk, the Abbott machine, is readily available throughout the hospital, but like Dr. Martin said, they just don't have the reagent that would react to the coronavirus, so, I mean, 45 minutes is a lot better than 13 days, or even two or three days. So they have the machines, they just need that reagent, and EMA's been trying to push that up the chain of command. The other day, I talked to the representative of Congressman Bill Johnson, and mentioned that too, that if our hospital could get reagent, that would, that would be a wonderful thing, and really move this along.
All right, very good.
We have a question from Sinne Macton.
Sautauke County Daily News.
Governor DeWine and Dr. Acton were talking yesterday, yesterday about a new normal where we might be wearing fabric masks in public for up to a year. We're making sure masks are available to those who can't afford them, fall under the purview of the Health Department.
I don't, well, right now, I don't believe so.
Do you have any extra masks?
Well, just let me say this. Early on in this pandemic, we got tasked with putting out a pattern for sewing masks, and it was overwhelming, the amount of people who called that had quilting circles and sewing people, and then other people that couldn't sew, was gathering up all kinds of material and elastic and things like that, and literally hundreds and hundreds of homemade masks have been pushed out in this county.
Yeah.
It's one of those things where it kind of reminds you of people doing their part in World War II, because so many people wanted to help, and even my former wife and my daughter have been at the sewing machine and making them, and so there's a lot of masks out there, and I would think that if it got to the place, you know, in Asian countries, this is a standard thing. People wear masks every day, and it might get to that, you know, especially in our bigger cities, that they do that. But I would feel confident to say that the people of Sautauke County, if there was a need for people that didn't have masks, the people, church groups and other people would get together and make them.
Agreed. I think one of the problems with the making of the mask right now is the shortage of elastic.
Yes.
And that's something that's being addressed, but it's going to take a while for manufacturing to ramp up for that, and in the meantime, they're using just regular cord that's more available. So I know that there's a lot of that going on here in Sautauke County, I know that personally, so I see a lot of that going on, and there's local companies helping with that, so, but I think a lot of them were tired. They'd been sewing so much, they were getting tired, and, but I think they're back at it today. They took some, some time off during Easter, and I don't blame them, they, you get tired after a while, but just, I know, I agree with you wholeheartedly, that we have enough people in Sautauke County that can sew, that they'll, they'll make that happen, and it's just a tough thing, there's such a shortage right now of PPE, but if we can get those masks made, they're not as effective, but they are effective, and it'll help, it'll help curb the.
And, and people should understand, they're not going to protect you against getting the COVID-19. It's, if you are, you could be a carrier and not even know it, you could not be symptomatic, and it keeps you from sneezing and coughing on people and spreading that to other people. So it's more or less not necessarily your protection, as it is protection of those you come in contact with, so.
Right.
As it were.
Okay, all right. Gentlemen, thank you so much for being here today. If we get some more questions, we'll shoot them over if you want us to. Larry, I know you're on, you're online quite a bit. Yeah, every moment of every day. Thank you again, gentlemen, for taking time and coming today. Appreciate it very much, and thank you for the questions, everyone. Okay, item five.
In matter of communication from access Sautauke County Transit regarding 2021 First Order Certifications of Budget Committee.
Questions or comments in regards to item five? Hearing none?
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Mr. Craftry?
Aye.
Ms. Coleman?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
In matter of its setting in its land's reports.
Any questions or comments in regards to item six? Hearing none?
I'll make a motion to accept.
Second.
Ms. Coleman?
Aye.
Mr. Craftry?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
In the matter of authorizing the work to advertise a notice to bidders for Sautauke County, County Road 136, 3.73 bridge demolition regarding Sautauke County Engineering Department.
Any questions or comments in regards to item seven? Hearing none?
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Mr. Craftry?
Aye.
Ms. Coleman?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
In the matter of resolution establishing a fund for Earl Thomas Colley Park improvements.
Questions or comments in regards to item eight? Hearing none?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Ms. Coleman?
Aye.
Mr. Craftry?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
In the matter of resolution adopting Sautauke County's temporary emergency COVID-19 leave policy regarding Families First Coronavirus Response Act.
Questions or comments in regards to item nine? Hearing none?
Motion to adopt.
I'll second.
Mr. Craftry?
Aye.
Ms. Coleman?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
In the matter of accepting amended certificate from the Budget Commission.
Any questions or comments in regards to item 10? Hearing none?
Motion to accept.
Second.
Ms. Coleman?
Aye.
Mr. Craftry?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
In the matter of request for preparation of funds.
Questions or comments in regards to item 11? Hearing none?
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Mr. Craftry?
Aye.
Ms. Coleman?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
And we needed to add one, again, late.
Yes.
We're only meeting this week, go ahead and put this one in there, so. It's in the matter petition for creation of energy special improvement district, and for special assessments for special energy improvement projects.
Are there any questions or comments in regards to item 12? And I'll add that this is the establishment of the Pace District of Harrison Township. This is something that we've been working on for some time now, and we got the revised document over from Legal late yesterday, so I forwarded it as soon as I could. A lot of this, I know that we already knew about, but they needed to revise just a couple of things in here to clarify Harrison Township, and exactly who, who, where the Pace District is being established. They did that, and this would allow us to move forward with the energies project in Harrison, but also allow us to eventually start the contiguous development of Pace Districts throughout the county. But the first one will be out at the airport in Harrison, and then we will move from there. Is there any, any questions or comments in regards to that before we, we vote? All right. Hearing none, item 12?
Motion to accept.
Second.
And approved.
Ms. Coleman?
Aye.
Mr. Craftry?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye. That is exciting news, actually. This will be our first in Sautauke County. This is an economic development tool that's going to be able to be utilized, so we have our first Pace District. Now, this is our part. This will now go to the Harrison Township trustees, which, who they will meet on Thursday night, and they will decide on their part on whether or not to move forward with that. So we're, we're very excited. We had, in the past, discussed this with them, and they were, they seemed excited about it as well, so it's great to know that we're starting somewhere, and we're going to be able to, the first project is the airport project, the energy efficiencies that are being realized there, so we're very excited about that. Okay. I was, I was hoping that we might be able to back up just a little bit, and I know some of the questions were asked to our EMA Deputy Director, and also our Health Commissioner. The first question that was asked was, what are our concerns? And I, I think we probably all have concerns about what's going on. We hear a lot from the public as a whole, and everybody has their own needs. A lot of them are the same, there's others that are really struggling right now, and I think personally, my first concern, of course, is people. We have a major concern. I echo what they said about our nursing homes, our assisted living centers, our retirement centers, basically where our elderly or seniors are living is a major concern, and something that, you know, I think we all are very concerned about, but I worry about our people, I worry about our, the health of our, our county, our citizens. I think we've been blessed, the fact that we, we've only had four confirmed. There are probably others out there. The good news is, is we don't have a probable. That was something that was mentioned last night in the, from EMA, that there is no probables right now, and there's no hospitalizations. So that was a plus, that was a, a good thing, but we got to continue to be vigilant, but so far, we, we've avoided that as a county, and that's, that's a good thing, but there's a major concern for the health of our citizens. The second thing is I'm very concerned about our business owners. I was corresponding with someone this morning, a restaurant owner, and his business is up 81%. That is a hit. I mean, that, that's, that's hard on any business, but I'm very concerned about our businesses, I'm very concerned about those that are, have been deemed essential, but especially our restaurants that are so, their business is so far off, and we've already lost some businesses here in our county, so that's a concern. I'm also concerned about our, our non-essential businesses, that, our essential businesses, I'm concerned about them, but I'm also very concerned about our non-essential businesses, because they're not in operation at all. And we're, I'm very concerned. I, I worry about the ability of them to make it through this. So with that said, the other things we had mentioned, and we, because if everybody understands, we're, we're very much under the sunshine law rule, we're, we're, this makes it very hard for us to, to talk about issues, but we, you know, something we need to be doing now is post-COVID. What does it look like in Sautauke County? As this starts to, to, the, the risk begins to lessen, at some point, the economy opens up, and employers start to go back to work, employees start to go back to work, what does that look like for our county? And that's something that we're talking about doing, is coming up with a post-COVID committee, something that we can bring in people to be inclusive, and I think the important part there is, is we're really going to have to rely heavily, and Commissioner Coleman, you had commented on this, about, and I think you did too, Mike, about, you know, our Health Commissioner, our, our medical professionals are going to be so important in those decisions to help us and guide us as to when that is. We know our governor, of course, is, he's the one that, and Amy Acton, the Director of Health, you know, has all these orders, and put all these orders in place, and they will be the ones to lift those orders, from what I understand. With us being a couple of weeks behind, it seems like, this is one of the comments that's been made about the peak, you know, Mr. Mullins, as a matter of fact, mentioned it this morning, about April 19th being that date, you know, what does that look like for us? When they start opening up area, other areas, are we going to be able to do that as well? And I think that's going to be so key for our medical professionals, our epidemiologists, our, our people that are doing all of this work, and that know, they know. I'm not a doctor, you know, and, but it's good that we know people that are, and know, and are professionals, what that's going to look like. I don't know. And I know a lot of people are asking that question out there. When is this going to open up? Are the schools, are the kids going back to school? We don't have those answers. We just don't have them. Those, those are things that are decided above this office, and, but at some point, those orders are going to come down, and when they do, we have to be prepared locally to act on those, and get our economy up and running as soon as possible, at the same time, not put public health at risk. And I think it's going to be a tightrope, I really do. I think it's going to be a balancing act on that tightrope, and I think it's going to be tough to do because of the nature of this pandemic and this virus itself. So with that said, I said my piece. Commissioner Coleman, I don't know how you feel about that.
Well, you know, everything is an unknown at this time.
Yeah.
So it's hard to be prepared until we're actually there, and then, you know, we'll, we'll have to act quickly and to make things transition smoothly, but that's my concern is that, you know, that, not only us, not only local governments, but the higher-ups are facing these same fears. So we'll do everything we can for this county, and do it as quickly and smoothly as possible, but really, really with it being an unknown, we don't know what we're facing, so we'll, we'll figure it out when the time comes, but we do need to be, make some preparations.
Sir?
Well, my biggest current concern is what the end result's going to be. Because from an economic standpoint, and from what I'm hearing on Facebook, and from different sources, and people on the street, is that, you know, this has been very devastating for people that, you know, have lost their entire source of income, and they're still waiting on stimulus checks. So, you know, I don't have the answer, you know. We, we didn't create the coronavirus, we didn't create this current situation we're in, but we've got to deal with it, and, you know, we're going to do whatever we can, you know, at the recommendation of not only our governor and our president, but, but also our healthcare professionals, and hopefully they'll get the tools they need to do the tests they need, and get the country back on track sooner rather than later.
Yeah, that's good. All right. Any questions that have come in since?
From Bill Shook, regarding the money for ETC Park, is it earmarked for a specific project?
Yes, that was the grant that was awarded. It's a $100,000 grant, and that will pay for the paving of some of the walkways, because they were, they were breaking up. They've been underwater some, so that's one of the worst things that can happen to pavement, but they've been broken up, but also this will help in the resurfacing and striping of the tennis courts, which we're needing done very badly. Also, eventually, we'll be paving and restriping the basketball courts. Of course, all of this doesn't mean that those things will be open, but it does mean that they'll be nice and really ready for play when the time comes. This is also going to help pave parking lots and things like that, so it was an ODNR grant that was gotten, so no general fund dollars are going to go toward that, and we're very excited about the opportunity to do this, and we'll be ready. When it gets opened up, we will be ready, and it's going to be very nice for the people of Sautauke County when that time comes.
That's ours, my man.
Okay, all right. Anything further?
Motion to adjourn.
All right.
I'll second the motion.
Mr. Craftry?
Aye.
Ms. Coleman?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye. And I, we pray that everyone had a blessed Easter.
Absolutely.
And we are just so glad that we're still able to come together in our space, and, and be able to have these meetings, and to try our best to communicate to the public what is going on, and we are, are doing our best.
Yes.
To keep things going. On a bright note, and to finish on a bright note, the county is healthy. We're fiscally healthy. We're going to continue to be so, and Sautauke County, we will get through this. We will come in, come over on the other side of this, come out on the other side of this, and we will be stronger and more prosperous than we ever were, but right now, we have to be patient, and in our patience, we pray, and we believe that there is a better and brighter day coming, and I believe that. I believe we're going to, we're going to emerge from this a stronger people, a stronger community, and the reason I say that- And the reason I say that is because we have done it before. We have been through things like this before as a community, and we will be stronger when this is over. We're already showing that strength, the way we're supporting each other now. So I, I ask Souda County to continue to do that. And through our patience and through our vigilance, we will prevail. Thank you.
Thank you.